Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, March 28, 2018, to order. Can we have a roll call, please, Mr. Alexander?
Yes. Mrs. Witkowski.
Here.
Mr. Gamble.
Here.
Mr. Nielsen.
Here.
Mrs. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mrs. Larson.
Here.
And I am here.
Thank you. The meeting has been properly posted. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item three is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Lewis.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Item four is community comment. Is there any community comment this evening? Hi, please come up to the microphone and state your name and address. Hi.
My name is Ann Sepersky, S-E-P-E-R-S-K-Y, 7851 West Canterbury Court, here in Franklin. I am coming to tonight following up on the communication I had with the board a couple of weeks ago when I reached out with my concerns regarding the class size at Ben Franklin's third grade. I'm following up tonight with continued concern. I thank you for listening to my concerns. I do also thank the district for finding the resources to add an additional halftime aid to the third grade class. When I checked in this week, I was told that it has kind of been too soon to really tell a difference, but that, you know, I am encouraged, at least that we have found those resources to try to address the problem somewhat. I continue to be concerned that the board is not following class size policy, 4220, of school board policy regarding class sizes and specifically the unique variables in each class that while the number may say 25 to 30, some classes may not follow that exactly because of the unique needs of that class. Our students are more than just bodies in a classroom. They are learners who have very specific and unique needs, and I believe Franklin wants to meet all those needs. I'm not sure that that is happening at this time. I know some of you have been in that classroom, in those classrooms, and I know that you have left with your heads spinning from being in the classroom. I am in the classroom every week on Tuesday mornings, and I feel the same when I leave. I have two thoughts in my head. My head is spinning, and I can't believe how hard those teachers are working and doing their darndest to make connections with our students, and I am so grateful for the teachers in the classroom. I urge you to consider these students and all students in Franklin schools. As you look to the future and start planning budget and allocating resources for next year, please consider your policy, please consider your students, and help the students, help the students find their personal success that Franklin wants for all of its students.
Thank you.
And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other comment this evening? Any other comment? Hearing none, then we will close community comment and move on to item number five, the Franklin High School presentation. Mr. Vulo.
I hope everybody's doing well. The presentation you're going to see in the real main attraction is actually in the gallery right now, and we'll get to that in a bit. I have a couple stories along the way to start with, and today I'm viewing this as kind of a storytelling opportunity for me to help you understand a little bit about me and also the great work we're doing at the high school. So, this slide, and I'm not going to read it to you, represents some of the things that are really important to me when it comes to when we talk about course proposals in a month like November, when we talk about schedule planning and master schedule building. But it's creating experiences that our kids want to be a part of. It's helping our students know themselves, know how they learn, and really increasingly give them those experiences through our pathways, through our courses, through the opportunities we have that are rich and diverse, because they want to be there. And the students who are here tonight want to be at Franklin High School to do the things they're doing. And everything they're going to show you and tell you about is stuff they've been afforded the opportunity to do because of the Franklin Public Schools and their education here. So, when it comes to knowing yourself, right, knowing that we are people who can continue to grow and learn, we have habits, mindsets, and dispositions that get better, right? Knowing that we need to have experiences beyond a classroom and with audiences beyond a classroom, and our learning doesn't just happen in the way that we went to school. It happens in new, increasingly authentic ways. So, these are things that I use to drive a variety of conversations at the high school, and these are incredibly important to me, and I hope that that comes across as we go through the time tonight. I did share with you earlier this year, we had our report card day, and one of the goals that I shared at that time for the high school was that we look at our seniors and we say, how many seniors complete a capstone? How many are engaged in a experience beyond the classroom? And how many complete their academic career planning portfolio prior to graduation? Some snapshot numbers of the year to date. Okay, we've had 22 youth apprenticeships, 67 internships, and 140 formal job shadows. We also set a record for the AP exams ordered for this year. And the reason I highlight that data, one, it's measurable, but two, these are indicators of things kids do to be ready for whatever they do next. Right, and that's what we owe them. When we hand them that diploma cover at the stage, and then they get their diploma at the sports complex, that's what diploma means, and that's what it has to mean. So, any one of those things by themselves is a piece of the bigger puzzle of those students showing us that they're ready. And those numbers, again, I think put most high schools in our area and in our state to shame. And there's high schools I know celebrate themselves as leading in these areas that aren't doing half the things we're doing with students. Their numbers aren't these great, and they're not growing. And we've dedicated time, we've dedicated people, and we focus on experiences that are rich and broad, and that should be evident by things like AP exams increasing and things like youth apprenticeship, internships, and job shadows also increasing. One of the challenges I have continuously as a high school principal and high school staff member is figuring out what it means to be ready. What do we measure? What do we value? How do we measure what we value? And I can't help but be a bit of a history teacher at times, and I thought this quote spoke a lot to what we're trying to do in education in 2018. I know normally this isn't really a Q and A piece, but we were talking trivia before and before the meeting started, and is it fair to ask, anybody have a guess who said this and when? Don't cheat. So, this is Richard Nixon in 1970, okay? Richard Nixon said this in 1970. How do we measure the immeasurables, right? This sounds like conversations we have in 2018. And he was saying that as the president in 1970. And this idea, there's more to things than just achievement in math and literacy, there is. And as a high school principal, one of the things I may ask you to always hold me accountable for is, are we measuring what we value and are we painting the breadth of our opportunities our kids have and sharing that story widely, sharing that story richly? Because we have so much to be proud of that we have to tell that story every opportunity we have. So, this to me, and again, that's history teacher in me. It's an interesting quote because I feel like if I put a different year up there and a different person, we could probably find the context and say, oh yeah, this was said last week by so-and-so, or five years ago by this person. And again, it's a really, really interesting quote, and we're talking about it, you know, in 1970, and that's a fair amount of years ago. As we define ready, I'm going to highlight a few things in here today that actually tie to a larger movement to redefine ready, and those words are intentionally used here. The School Superintendent Association, so one of the groups that Dr. Miller, you know, professionally belongs to, is coming out with things that across states and across school districts speak to, how do we measure that students are college-ready, career-ready, and life-ready? So, for example, habits and mindsets and dispositions, right? Those are very important, as important to our success sitting here today as anything else. This evening I had to react with humor, and I had to think flexibly, because I told every one of those students back there, every one of those eight students, I said, be at the board meeting at seven. Cool? Cool. All right, seven, okay? So, think about that. And why did I say 7:00 PM? For 14 years, board meetings for me started at 7:00 PM. I had this in my calendar. It was still calendared, right? It was calendared from 5:00 to 9:00, but I was honest to goodness certain, right? I would have bet you a million dollars that this meeting, those kids, 7:00 o'clock, yeah, perfect, you'll be great. And then, I had to rethink and again, react with humor, with grace, and also tell every one of their parents I was calling, and the kids when they came in, it's my bad, that's my fault, right? But I would have been convinced, right, that that's the case. So, how do we respond when we do those things, right? How do we think as adult learners and adults that we're not perfect, we make mistakes, we continue to learn, get better? Are our kids equipped with those life-ready skills? Have they had experiences beyond the classroom? Have they met those academic indicators we already talk a lot about? So, this group, as we talk about redefining ready, has set out some examples of what those things are and their research-based metrics that I know you'll probably hear more about in time from us as a district, but I wanted to highlight a few of those today. And the biggest piece is, we're preparing kids for a future wherein it's not just enough to have academic achievement, they have to have that well-rounded experience. Some examples of college-ready, and these are very traditional. Examples of academic indicators, this isn't new to anybody in this room, right? So, the ACT standards and benchmarks, taking advanced placement exams, taking advanced placement courses, whether or not the exam is actually taken and passed, those are indicators that say you're academically going to be ready, and there's a myriad of other ones as well. But those are research-based indicators. So, when I say we have over 800 exams ordered, that means we have a lot of students in advanced placement classes, a lot of students earning advanced placement scores, right? Probably 70-some percent of those kids will get a three or better. Other indicators could include dual enrollment classes beyond our high school. We have great partnerships with M A T C. We have courses through W Oshkosh, through CAP and World Language. Those are other indicators, right? These are just some samples of what it means to be academically ready. Almost more exciting to me is that career indicators are as important, right? It's not just one or the other. Workplace learning experiences, having an identified career pathway, earning an industry credential, okay? Being involved in two or more co-curriculars. If I made a list of all the activities and athletic offerings we had at Franklin High School, and I put that up on a poster, and then, you know, we talked to our students, are you involved in something beyond the classroom? Many will say yes, right? I know Mrs. Nerdle already had a conversation with you around athletics and activities, but just know, that's another indicator. If kids check yes on that box, they are more likely to be successful at the next level, and that they fall under the career readiness indicator. So, we talk about what it means to be ready. I'd ask you to ask these students about what their experience is, about what they've learned this year, and really let them tell their story. I'm going to ask you to divide yourselves up a little bit, and we'll work with the students in the back of the room, but we have a cross-section of students here. Some are involved in a project lead-the-way capstone, some are involved in internship, and I really want them to be able to tell you and have you ask them questions about, what's your experience been at the high school? How has experience helped you develop as a person, learn things, work with people? Ask them to tell their story. Some might have a little prompt for you, they might have a little bit of a gadget to show off, some might not, right? But they are the best example we have for what it means to be ready leaving Franklin High School. There's no story or statistic I can show you that's better than the students we have telling their stories. So, with that being said, and do we normally ask questions or do we later?
Entirely.
Okay. You can stop me at any point. Again, teacher in me, sometimes I get going. Does anybody have any questions before I divide you up and have the kids kind of move Did anybody deep down have Richard Nixon pegged as the author of that quote? All right, I'll, that could be a thing, maybe the next time I'll have another quote from a different president. What's that?
Maybe I will ask a question.
Okay, please.
I know the number of AP classes, it's a very high number, but is there, can we have too many AP exams? Is there too many, too much? This creates pressure, it creates, I mean, and I can talk to kids, obviously I'll have the opportunity, but...
Sure. The, sorry, the, I would say, there can be the fear or, you know, students and parents wanting to do too much, right, and have every experience, right? And I'm passionately committed to our students choosing to be involved in the things we offer them. But what they'll hear, they'll hear it at the different nights that we offer, whether it's Pathways to Your Future Night, freshman registration, there is no one way to go through high school. So, college board would suggest they have the research that indicates that taking an AP class is always good, even if you don't pass the exam. It's still better having taken it, right? The pressure that you're talking about, though, that's that fine line between, you know, a student I had 10 years ago as a teacher who told me that three APs is too many, right? And she was one of the most brilliant students I have. She went to Northwestern, graduated in four years. She was brilliant, and she thought three was too many in 2008, which seems quaint now, right? Three at one time. So, that arms race, that mindset, I think it's important for us to help people understand that what universities look at, it's not just AP courses. What people are going to look at once you're enrolled in a place is not just, you know, whether or not you can pass a test. Like, if you're sitting down for an exam we didn't make that's created by somebody else, and it's great, it lets you accelerate through school, I believe in it, but also knowing that the reason you're successful in class and college won't just be because you took AP US History, it'll be because you learned how to study, you learned about yourself, right? Not that you knew history, right? In fact, you might not take no US History course because you took AP US History, right? So, we get into those things, these will be as important. The habits and mindsets you develop will be more important, because most of our students don't leave school because it's content knowledge lack, it's habits, it's being able to stick with stuff, know themselves, be responsible. Those are the things that get in the way of post-secondary completion in most cases. So, I think there is a, there's probably a high point, but right now, I'm excited to see the growth, and I think it's important for our students to know that they have to have a well-rounded experience, and again, be involved in more than just the classroom, and know that you shouldn't have to feel you take everything. Take the things that are important to you, that help you become better and become who you want to be for whatever's next. Other questions? All right, so, the way this is going to work, and I don't know if, I can step away, Jim? Is that all right? The students are going to divide themselves up between, you have four tables, basically two students kind of at each table, right? What I'm going to ask of you, okay, is that you divide up, and so, and directors, if you're going to join and equal audience, and you want to sit and watch or join, I'm not really sure exactly how that works, but I'd ask board members just, okay, at most, go around as pairs or individually, talk to students. I'll try to remind us, maybe rotate every so often, because I think it's important for more than one student. But I also know that, you know, it's a lot easier to have a conversation with one or two people than it is with, you know, a whole handful of people. So, as the students are spaced out around the tables, the tables aren't meant to be something where you have to sit, where the kids have to sit. It's just a way for us to organize ourselves and have, okay, people spread out through the room. Okay? So, the students will divide up, and a couple will go in each spot, and then I'd ask you to divide yourselves up amongst the eight students, okay? And talk to them, let them tell a new story.
Sure.
And if I think there's students, do you have a time or a set you want to...
That's going to give them a moment to...
Okay, 15 minutes, so about a couple minutes, but each student will rotate.
Did they leave?
Yeah.
I think they all left, yeah.
Well, thank you for bringing the students in to the parents.
Have a seat.
I told them we didn't have to come back.
Sorry, I thought I was going to give the kids, I mean, I can't say enough how grateful I am that they're here to talk to you all. And those are, that's, I want to say it was six and two, I think, seniors, juniors, but like, those are students who, I mean, they're more typical than not, they're exceptional. But I mean, we have a lot of kids who do exceptional things. So, please don't forget that, that in spite of all the other things where, you know, we have maybe outliers on either end of a spectrum, like, we have a lot of students who are going to do the things these students are doing, and as we create new experiences, opportunities, pathways, courses, it's to have students do these things, right?
And those are the things that people don't know, if they don't, if they have kids in a district but they're at the elementary level. I know, I call it the elementary bubble, you know, I mean, where I live, it's a block from Robinwood, and for the first eight years, everything was my house to that school, my house to that school, and nothing going on up here. I even paid attention to who knew anything about it, it just wasn't on the radar. But that's a good story to tell about what's going on at FHS and making sure everybody, district-wide, community-wide, knows all the new things we're doing there.
So, the senior classes, how many students?
340, 350.
340?
It's more than that. 397.
397.
397 is what I want, I have 397 in my head.
So, I mean, I mean, from the numbers you presented, it was like 22 with through one of the programs.
Youth apprenticeship.
67 through internships or some other experience, you know, so that's 99 students out of, or 89 students out of 400. What are we doing to try to increase the visibility to these programs or increase opportunities to these programs? You know, one of the experiences that we shared was, they went through the health interodes program and realized that that's not what they wanted to do. They wanted to go into business, which is, you know, a similar experience, I think, for most people even on the board of learning what you don't like may be more valuable than learning what you do, but what are we doing to try to increase those opportunities?
And they've increased, I want to say, well, I can't remember the exact number, two years ago, but they've increased exponentially. Part of that is intentional when it comes to our academic career planning. So, we talk about ACP weeks and different things. We've created the opportunity to have internships through every department in our high school, but then we have more opportunities where we have capstone courses and, you know, programs like Family Consumer Science. We have programs like, in this case, we had students in the biomedical capstone, we had Mara who's an intern here, right, through the ECC, and that internship carries with its certain, you know, credentials and things they have to do. And we're really trying to say to everybody who wants students working for them, let's say, make it an internship, right? Let's make it real. I, to be honest, would love to have an intern next year in the office to help us, maybe they're a marketing intern, and maybe they help us do stuff that as a high school staff, you know, of administrators, we want to do, but sometimes we could use a little bit of support, and the kids can do great stuff. So, you know, it's us advertising, it's almost like putting on a want ad. It's us saying to kids when they are with us, here's the new opportunity, and then it's also us intentionally supporting these things when they come up. Rachel Fredericks is a huge part of these things, growing, having her role, and then increasing visibility of these opportunities by highlighting who our partners are. You know, we're hosting a job fair at the high school. It's not really targeted at high school kids, but our staff and then our kids, like, they're going to say, there's a job fair tonight.
Do you think it's more of a supply issue or a demand issue? That we just don't have, you know, a large number of in Franklin or close proximity employers that would be interested in a program like this, or we don't have, you know, on the flip side, on the demand issue, that students just don't know that these opportunities exist?
I'd say the demand piece is the one we have to build, because I think we have a lot of supply, we have partners in the community who want to partner with us and get students like this into their workplaces. So, it's us convincing kids that these are the experiences worth having, these are the things that you don't want to miss out on, you want to buy a ticket to, right? In a day and age when students have choice, which they do, and that's great, we want them to choose these things.
Do you think that a portion of that is also ensuring that parents are aware of these opportunities as well? You know, I mean, I look back and reflect maybe on myself, and I was maybe driven from my parents in an aspect of my education as well as my own interests, and I feel like, at least at the high school level, it would be ridiculously beneficial to include, whether it's more communication, visibility to those programs during conference days, whatever, to ensure that there is that visibility for the adults in these kids' lives.
Yeah, and the intentionality behind that very story, that threads through every conversation we're going to have with incoming ninth-grade parents and families, right? And also trying to convince people that we went through school a certain way, and when I was in school, I know that we were told a lot what we should do. I had teachers tell me where I should go, what I should do when I'm there, I had parental expectations, like you said, and it didn't necessarily involve these things. So, convincing people that just what you did isn't necessarily what your students have to do, that it's okay to learn what you don't want to do, like Mara did, knowing I don't want to go into this biomedical strand, that's a worthwhile experience. I'd rather find out when I'm 17 than when I'm 25, right? And then, knowing that these things exist, and we want to push our students to those, you know, because there is going to be that parent piece of, do we believe truly, truly, truly that this is as valuable as the AP arms race, as the GPA, as the ACT test, you know, even though the research would indicate that it is as valuable, as important to have these experiences? And we have to tell that story constantly, continuously, and then that's why it's important to talk about how we're going to share these numbers, because it's easy to focus on one academic measure and say, look at this, we're doing great, right? Look how we improved in math or whatever it is. But if we're not sharing these things widely, and if I don't continue to try to build in ways where I can engage families to come in and learn about this, it's not going to help the demand, because people will default to what they've always done.
It's a fantastic opportunity, and I don't think anyone on the board would think otherwise, but I think it's 100% imploring yourself and the high school team, basically, to increase visibility to the programs, which would inevitably drive interest.
Yeah, I agree. I'm encouraged where the numbers are, because this is something that just got rolling.
Yeah.
I mean, to say that we have the numbers we have after a couple of years.
Last year was, this is the first year we've offered an internship in district.
So, all right, so, I mean, now, take a look, fast forward this conversation five, six years, and then we'll see where we are, and I guarantee it's going to be higher. So, it's real encouraging.
Have you thought about bringing students back, Franklin High School graduates back to kind of share what their experience was?
Yes.
Did they go to college, and four years later they're doing this? Or there are other stories, other ways to get to your destination, if you even know what that is? That was the thing I was going to ask, but that would be one thing, if you could, if they would come back and invite students back.
And they typically want to come back, right? They want to come back and see adults, right? So, it's those times, right? We're going to have kids available in December and January who have left us and come back. We'll be able to get them in May, right? To actually have a panel and say, here's a college experience. It's not us telling you, because, no offense to any students, they don't necessarily believe adults, right? I mean, that's not a news flash, but no matter what we tell them, sometimes it's not real. But a student who's 19, 20, or 22, telling them that same story, right? I'm living this, like, here's what I'm experiencing.
I wish I would have known.
Yeah, yeah, I wish, and that's the piece of, there's power in that, and I know we can get customers in terms of kids to listen and students to come back. Absolutely.
In terms of, you know, work experience, what about, you know, the job? Do the kids have jobs nowadays, you know? Do they go to McDowell? Do they go to Kohl's? Are there those experiences? We find those valuable, or are those on the radar of what kids can do during their high school career to be ready?
Mm-hmm. In terms of employability, I know that we talk a lot about students earning credentials, and almost every experience a student has in terms of an internship or some other pathways we have on campus results in the earning of a credential. So, something that's kind of vetted that says, my experience allowed me to do this. We still have a far number, or decent number, of students who work, and again, what makes you employable with an employer? I have a freshman right now who can sometimes challenge me a bit, who's employed, he's gainfully employed, and I know he acts a certain way at work and he doesn't act that way at school. How do I get him to act the way he does at work at school, right? I mean, like, and he's with me more than he's with his boss, and, you know, how do I get him to engage with his education the way he engages with work? And this is a freshman in high school, you know, who is employed, who's fine, but how do I even do that at school? You know, so, kids still work, but I think also a lot of these students, they're incredibly busy, you know, how many hours are at school, then there are activities, you know, and these are still students, you know, how do they maintain and balance? I mean, I don't have to tell anybody who's a parent up here that students come home from an activity, from an event, you know, we had a, you know, ballroom dancer who does this competitively in the room tonight, who came here after doing that till 5:00 o'clock and then came here and is now going home for the first time now. That's a 12-hour day, right? Now do homework and get sleep, and you need more of it than any of us, right? That's a hard balance, hard balance.
I think every time Rachel Fredericks goes to the Chamber of Commerce, she picks up the interest of another mentor or business partner, and she does a really good job with that program. And then, I'd sure really like to see our students at the state convention with a booth or a table. See a lot of other districts that I think would be really great.
Yeah.
At that convention.
And that's not to put any other districts down, but like, we're better than a lot And that's not to put any other districts down, but like, we're better than a lot of them. We're out there pitching whatever it is they're pitching and telling their story. And it's not about promotion for others and sort of, you know, self, you know, congratulatory work, but we should be proud of it. And when we have a partner breakfast this year, you know, we're going to have one that recognizes all our community and business partnerships. But then, you know, like, I wonder, how do we get those partners and these kids together more frequently? You know, as in addition to sharing with adults, you know, and saying, thank you for being a partner. Because we have, even though Franklin doesn't have a ton of, you know, businesses compared to some of our neighbors maybe, we have some who are highly engaged, who want more, right? And they're hungry for our students, they're hungry to support our programs. So, like, they're there, ready to be partners with us in classes and in experiences. So, we just have to keep opening up the door and saying yes.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item six is the consent agenda. Would any board member like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Here in Nandu, I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So.
Motion by Mrs. Witkowski. Second by Mr. Lewis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Item seven is school board announcements. Do we have any announcements tonight? All right, here in Nandu. Item eight, school board calendar. We have a regular board meeting on Wednesday, April eleventh, twenty eighteen, here at the Education and Community Center at six o'clock PM and a regular board meeting here on Wednesday, April twenty-fifth, twenty eighteen, here at the ECC at six o'clock PM. Item nine, reports and presentations. We have nine A, the Financial Literacy Report, Mr. Nick Cohen and Mr. Chris Swoiter.
Good evening. Mr. Vollo spoke to college career and life readiness and one of those key areas of life readiness is financial literacy. And so, you have the full report in Board Docs. I wanted to take the opportunity to just highlight a couple of key areas tonight around the report. Mr. Vollo is going to speak a little bit to one of the, I think, significant or more significant changes that we're proposing. And then we just wanted to address questions this evening and then we'll come back to the board in April with some action items related to some of this work. So, you know, obviously in December, there was a new assembly bill that required districts to adopt a set of financial literacy standards and then identify where that was going to be taught in the curriculum K-12. And I just wanted to start by highlighting that, you know, we have immersed a number of financial literacy standards throughout our curriculum K-12 at present. And we do it in a number of different departments through a number of different courses and we have a high number of students who are participating in those courses throughout that K-12 experience. This, however, afforded us the opportunity to step back and take a look at the new standards and then say, all right, well, given that, how can we do things a little bit better? How can we make sure that all students have access to these experiences and make sure that they really do all walk out our doors financially literate? And so, we put together a number of teams at multiple levels. There was a high school team that consisted of high school teaching staff, administration, Mr. Swoiter, myself. At the middle level, middle school teachers and administration, Mr. Swoiter, myself. And then the elementary level, the initial conversations were between us and the elementary principals. And then we took all of that information and those recommendations and we went to our Education for Employment Team, our district team, that has a number of parents, students, teachers, and administrators from across the district and industry partners. And we brought those ideas to them and then we collected their feedback in terms of what they thought was doable for us in terms of how we might enhance that programming. All of that work led to a number of recommendations, the first one being that the board adopt, beginning with next school year, the state's new financial, personal financial literacy standards. Right now, those standards live really in three key areas, our Family Consumer Science standards, our business standards, and then our social studies standards through economics. These standards are a nice way to kind of consolidate all of those into one place to provide some nice clarity and a nice progression of work. K-12, it's going to help us move, as we move forward. We also felt it was important to call to that specific set of standards, to call to the importance of educating every child around personal financial literacy. And so, one of the things we'll be coming back to the board for in April, we'll be seeking your adoption of those standards as the basis for our financial literacy instruction moving forward. One of the other key changes was related to a proposal to make personal financial literacy a graduation requirement at the high school level, beginning with the class of 2023. And I'm going to ask Mr. Vollo to speak to the way we're structuring that and why we decided to move forward with that.
Thanks, Nick. So, the large opportunity in front of us was to really, really take something that I believe is good for kids in terms of being financially literate and then say, how are we going to address this with our students? And a graduation requirement was appealing to me. It was appealing to me starting with a certain cohort because then it's clean and we're not worrying about the kids we have right now trying to do something new. But the other piece of it that was intentional through conversations with the team that I met with at the high school, it was teachers and administrators, was making the graduate requirements twenty-eight and a half versus the twenty-eight it is now. Students can earn eight credits a year and thirty-two credits over the course of four years. And you probably heard it in November, you'll hear me say it today. I truly believe every kid should maximize those opportunities that we have and we created and take advantage of every pathway we have. So, with financial literacy being something we believe is good for kids as an addition, the idea would not be to just keep it at twenty-eight and then say, well, take less of something else, but to require twenty-eight and a half credits, which, you know, encourages again, full-time enrollment and status as a student who maximizes eight credits each and every year because I shouldn't have students rushing to finish early. I should have students trying to stay and complete and take advantage of all the things we're offering. So, when I think about these things we're creating, again, like, those should be things that our kids don't want to get in the bare minimum. We don't want graduates twenty-eight credits, right? I want graduates thirty-two credits. I want them to take advantage of the opportunities we have on campus, dual credit, AP, internships. And those students you're talking to, those seniors, they're choosing to be enrolled and complete these things. So, the twenty-eight and a half is very intentional to make it something in addition to move us closer to our kids taking advantage of four years of an opportunity across, you know, all the years we have as a district, K-12, right, or potentially for K-12 at some point, and really working on those items. So, that's the idea here would be adding a half credit to the total graduation requirements we ask of students versus just throwing it into the existing twenty-eight.
You heard Mr. Vollo reference the starting point being intentional, right? That seventh grade cohort, the class of 2023. Again, even our current eighth graders have enrolled and registered for classes for next year. So, we want to make sure we're not disrupting their pathway to graduation at this point and that we would start with that additional requirement, then starting with that seventh grade class. That said, I think it's important to point out a couple of things on that. One is, we're trying to provide opportunities for students to meet that requirement in multiple ways so that it's not just one required course. And so, really, there'll be one of four courses that students can access to complete that. So, it would be a personal finance course, which currently exists. It would be our existing economics course, our independent living course in Family Consumer Science, or a yet-to-be-developed online course that can deliver that student, that curriculum to students in a flexible way. And so, the plan will be, once the standards get adopted, we'll bring together the instructors of those courses, we'll identify a set of priority standards out of that group of standards that will be common across all four of those experiences. And then there will be slightly different standards in addition to that in each of those areas depending on the content, right? If I'm looking through an economics lens, that might be slightly different than if I'm looking through a personal finance lens. But there's a core set of standards that will be taught in all four of those experiences that are the same so that we can provide that experience for students. The other thing I want to point to is, these are not by any means the only places at the high school level that those standards exist, right? We have an array of business courses, we have an array of social studies and Family Consumer Science courses where elements of the financial literacy standards exist and are being taught to students. We have a number of experiences at the elementary and middle level as well that expose students to those concepts through junior achievement and through other experiences. And then at the high school level, we also have a number of other experiences in addition to these classes that students can participate in. So, really, you know, from our perspective, we're just enhancing the programming that's there rather than filling a void that exists. We feel like we do a pretty good job of educating students in this area right now, but we want to enhance that experience so that we can really, truly guarantee every student walks out our doors having had that.
And can I just add as well that most of our students, I can't remember the exact percentage or number we had, take one of these courses already within their pathway. So, you know, we have a lot of students taking advantage of this. So, this opportunity to create some core consistency between these courses is going to be a great opportunity and many of our students are doing this already and they're taking one of these three courses. So, it's not going to be a huge add-on, but again, it'll, I think, add some consistency across those things because economics versus independent living versus personal finance, they're pulling in many of the same directions and the teachers know what the standards are and they're excited to do this work.
The other thing I would point out there is, in the meantime and interim, before that requirement goes into effect for that class, we're certainly going to encourage all of our students to continue to take these courses and participate in these experiences. It's at the heart of our academic and career planning efforts. Financial literacy is a key component of that. So, we're certainly going to continue to kind of backfill and make sure that we've got all students involved in some experience before they graduate related to personal financial literacy. I would just then highlight the middle and elementary level proposals quickly. At the middle level, obviously, we're, we've got some changes coming, right, with the new building and the new curriculum. And then within that, we're going to require a forced exploratory in personal finance at either the seventh or eighth grade level that all students will participate in. So, again, it's another opportunity for us to get at some of those standards at the fifth through eighth grade level that students can engage in and participate in. And at the elementary level, we have some experiences through junior achievement that we're going to continue to utilize. And then we're going to, as we get closer to that, to the adoption of the standards and move into next year, reengage at the elementary level with the teaching staff and talk about where might we integrate some more pieces of this to make sure that it's a robust experience and it's not one that simply starts at the high school level or even starts at the seventh or eighth grade level, but starts at the kindergarten level and pulls all the way through. With that, we would take questions.
Yes, so is the required, making a requirement that's not required by the state, though? That's a local decision?
It's a local decision, yes.
And I guess I'm curious, how many of our graduates have less than thirty-two credits? You seem to express a concern that it had to be a requirement to encourage them to stay or is that, because what is the percent that?
I'd say many of our students choose to have free blocks, they choose to have aid blocks. So, for example, this year, we have about two hundred and twenty students who are choosing to have a free block that they've earned, it's an incentive, right? But that means there's at least a half credit they're not earning right now that they could be. So, it's imperative for us, as we develop courses and pathways, that I truly believe that kids sort of like choose to buy the ticket and I would rather have this experience versus I'd rather go home or sleep in or have an hour and a half off. So, free block is a longstanding tradition or not long, I don't know how longstanding, but it's a tradition that when the block came in, the seniors have this privilege they can earn. But again, like, that means they're not taking a course. It's, you know, like, I'm not suggesting that that's the worst thing in the world, but they're doing that intentionally, knowing that they could be taking a course that probably can move them ahead a little bit. So, there's a balance of really good kids earn a free block, right? But, you know, half of our graduates about probably have a free block right now. So, half of them will be about a half credit less, right? Or if they have a free block and a volunteer block, for example, where they're not currently earning credit because they're not an intern, or they're not doing an apprenticeship or something like that, then we're talking, no, I'm earning thirty-one credits, okay?
How would you envision the online course plays in? I mean, if I can take the online course at night at eight o'clock, I would still be able to maintain a free block, right?
Correct, yeah. And, again, opportunities and could it happen outside of a traditional nine-month school year calendar? Probably yes. I mean, I think it's imperative we make a requirement like this. We have students right now who will say they have a hard time fitting in our existing requirements, you know, be it a FIA class or a health class because they want to do something very specialized. So, I think it speaks to that opportunity that there's no single way to do it. And it's the right thing to do, I think, when we create something like this because there's kids who have very particular pathways that may even involve things beyond our campus. So, if I'm going to go to M A T C for something or I'm going to do this, then this becomes imperative and it can happen anytime over that nine, twelve career versus it must happen at this level.
I also think it'd be interesting to see, you know, a percentage or number breakdown of the graduating class, how many are actually taking the courses that this content would be included in if we have.
Currently?
Yeah.
Sixty-four percent this year. Last year's graduating class was fifty-nine percent.
So, if most of them are already taking it, we're not really adding a half a credit for financial literacy, right? Or just saying you've gotten taken a half a credit somewhere.
Well, you would be.
It's more about the fact that it is about requiring them to take financial literacy because they're already taking it.
It is for the thirty-five percent who aren't.
Right, right. But the majority of it is people already taking it.
But those numbers have gone up.
Yeah, they've gone up every year for the last five years.
Because that's about, the last five years is about, this has been a kind of a hot topic of mine to get this, get this going. It's been on my radar for a long time. So, I commend you guys for taking the step where the state doesn't require it as a graduation requirement, but we're making that local decision to make it a graduation requirement because I think if we're talking about college and career ready, college and career ready, you can't not have this component. And so, I think when I got that memo, I was like, okay. And you knew that was going to be my reaction too.
And those courses currently are considered an elective, right, economics?
Correct, yes.
So, we're basically requiring an additional point-five credits of an elective.
Well, and we've kind of come full circle on that because we made, we changed econ from a requirement.
Right, we took it back.
To an elective and now we've kind of come full circle on it. So, rather than mandating a personal financial literacy course, which is a fantastic course, we're allowing people to get this requirement in a number of different ways. So, it's nice to have the flexibility.
Can we mandate it without adding the additional point-five? Just take something like, you know, so we can do the same thing without adding a point-five?
But he just spoke as to why he would encourage us not to.
Well, we can and that's, I think, the, in April.
I just want to, you know, make sure we're clear on what we're actually doing here, you know? We are trying to make kids take more classes. So, it's not like a study hall, it's just an open block, right? I mean, when I went to high school, we always had this study hall thing, but now they, they're scheduled through the whole class or through the whole day?
Typically, yeah.
Typically, so there is no free block other than.
Then we have a gold block or an advisory period for thirty-eight minutes, four days a week, which involves a lot of academic career planning, but also involves students meeting with teachers. And that'll be at least three of those four days. So, that doesn't happen on Thursdays when we have early release. So, we don't have a study hall. And again, I'm, I know we're not talking about acting on a graduation requirement tonight, but I'm truly committed to the idea that we should choose and we want kids to choose to come back even though they don't have to, right? So, because if I had two hundred kids finishing that semester, which I don't, right, nowhere near that, but completing early because they have twenty-eight credits and they're able to do that over the course of three full years and one half semester, or one semester, that wouldn't be something I could sit here and say, that's great. Because that means they're not doing stuff that we offer for the next, you know, second half of a year. So, I truly believe that, like, take advantage of what we have because we have so much. And please, choose to do that. It is a choice for kids. So, this does, like you said, does incentivize and make it less of a choice and does create a little bit where it's another course that they have to take. That's true.
That said, to Mr. Vollo's point, senior free block, it's one, at most, it's one full credit or lack of one full credit. So, if a student's taking free block their senior year, the entire year, they can still earn thirty-one credits through taking normal courses. So.
Mr. Cohen, do you, do you know if we took the 2013 Financial Literacy Survey? Do you recall if we took?
I don't. Yeah, I don't.
Okay. I, you know, I'm glad we're moving ahead with this. We really need it, but it just took so long for us. And like, Mr. Nielsen, I really wish we had done it sooner instead of later, but it is a good percentage, you know, fifty-nine percent.
Yeah, well, and like I said, I think the change in statute afforded us the opportunity to step back and really give it some focused attention in time and think about, in terms of our priorities, where does it fit in and, you know, what do we need to do to improve in that area, so.
Thanks. Any other questions? Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item nine B is the Forest Park.
Sorry, just in terms of approving the courses or the structure, that would be November type here?
So, we actually won't need to approve the courses. And other than the new course, the online course, when that experience gets created, what we will need to do in April is adjust our graduation policy to put this new requirement in with a phase in. And then the board will also need to formally adopt the standards.
Okay, because the planned implementation is for next year already, right, 1920?
For the standards to be in place, yes. All right, thanks.
Item 9B is the Forest Park construction report, Mr. Millsor.
Well, if you saw the building on the way in, I think it's apparent that it's moving along very quickly now and really taking shape, which is exciting. A lot of the masonry work is done or almost done. The first floor steel columns have gone in and the girders are being put in place. The concrete floor planks for the second floor have gone in. And they've been using the three cranes for that. Each of those is about 14,000 pounds, lowering them into place, and they've put 62 of them in place today to finish that up. After all those floors are set, they'll go up again with the steel for the second floor. And then they'll, about two weeks, they'll start putting in prefab wall panels up where in the past, we might have just built it in place, like, kind of like you would think, start building the walls in place. But they've been making those offsite and they'll start bringing them in and placing them there. So it'll take them about four weeks to put those panels in place where it would have taken them several months to build that in place. They're putting in the steel stair treads in those stair towers out there. They're starting the exterior brick in a few places. They're working on the gym roof, finishing that. And as soon as that floor in there, they can get that to dry out to where they need it, they'll be pouring the concrete in the gym to get the floor in there. Pretty soon, they'll be spraying fire retardant on the steel columns and the metal panels for the roof. So it's really moving incredibly fast, even seeing it every day. The changes are just huge and they're working on everything at once. It's really a choreographed kind of an event where they know exactly what's next and who's doing what first, so that it all fits together. It's, they're doing a great job, we're really happy with it. Any questions?
How often do you have meetings?
Something every week. And then specifically an owner's meeting every two weeks. But Mr. Cludia goes to a meeting every week and sits in with the construction manager and then the, all of the subs that are working on it.
Are all decisions made then? Are you still working on furniture choices or walkover?
I think the, about the only thing left is furniture choices. The current middle school, they're experimenting with furniture now that is in the classrooms and that they're using to see what works and what doesn't. And then based on that, we'll order the furniture for the new building.
Thank you very much. Item 9C is the treasure support is available in the board's dock library. And then item 10, school board liaison reports. We have the personnel and policy, policy 6122, release for religious instruction. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you. Again, as per our walk between WASB's policies and our policy 6122 is a policy that was identified as required within the district for release for religious instruction. As you can see, the policy itself has been somewhat heavily edited, at which Dr. Miller can comment on also. But the sub-paragraphs, I think, three, four and five were also removed from the administrative rules section and added to the policy per state statute. So I'll stop there if anyone has any questions.
Just a quick question, so how many people take advantage of this? How many students do we have that are even involved with it?
I've got a couple of requests this year. So two that I've been involved in in terms of working through how much time and when the children should be gone from school.
Past years, you're not aware of any or?
I'm not personally, no. But as a superintendent this year, there've been a couple.
And what grade level?
Elementary.
Elementary, okay.
And, you know, the policy is, you know, was quite old. We haven't looked at it in a long time. I anticipate we may get more requests, so I wanted to refine the language a little bit in the rules. And I felt it necessary to bring into policy the actual language from the statute. Those would be the changes.
So I'll make a motion to approve the updated 6122.
Second. Motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mrs. Larson, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Since we're on personnel and policy and since our agenda items is going to come after our closed session, I just want to ask the board if they will consider policy 4240, class size? Just bringing that forward since it is such an old policy and it wasn't on the review list, it is over 10 years old. If we can just bring that forward to be reviewed with the understanding that it, how should I put that?
Like historical. Right, we need to conduct a study around class size and bring that information along with any revisions to the policy. So in order to revise the policy, we need to take a look at the research and do a study around class size. So I can deploy our team to do that work and then bring that back to the board.
Because there isn't anything just to revise on it. I mean, we have to have a thorough study of it to see how everything should be applied.
I think that's good, but the study has to be more than just class size. Because what I've heard is that there are issues where you can have a class that has 20 kids in it as opposed to 30, which still has issues.
It's not going to be a quick bringing back. So if there's no objection from the board to bring that back and to have.
Good idea. I think it's worth looking at.
Yep.
Yeah.
Since we're on this topic, just so everyone is aware, I did have a meeting on January 29th with Ms. Elihausen, Mr. Cohen and Mr. Reuter regarding this policy and future discussions on whether or not we were going to review it and whether or not there were potential revisions that could be suggested to the board. So perfectly fine with bringing it up then. But, you know, I would implore, as I did at that point, the teams to kind of have their suggestions.
Sounds good then, thank you. Then we'll move on to item 10B, board liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports? I have one, which you'll see. I did put a little report in there that has a couple of pictures. Three, well, actually, it was last, today's 3/20. Last week, I went to Countrydale. It was just a 15-minute visit for their, Countrydale's kindness week. And I went on Thursday and it was the last day of their kindness week. And all the students were lined up in the gym, around the entire gym. And each student brought in a chain that the class had made. And on the chain, they had acts of kindness that they had written on the chain for the entire week and they had linked together. And each class then linked their chain together and they surrounded the gym with the acts of kindness. But during the whole week, they celebrated Countrydale's kindness vision, which was, we believe that is important to teach positive behaviors, increase student engagement and build character. And we do this by talking and learning about the importance and power of kindness. And if you look in my report, on Monday, they were encouraged to wear yellow and spread sunshine. And then that was the day they received their chains and they talked about acts of kindness and that they would join their links with other, a buddy classroom's chain. And on Tuesday, they were encouraged to wear orange for cultural diversity and they read books on kindness and a book called A Bad Case of Stripes. And then each class received a puzzle piece and each member of the classroom signed the puzzle piece. And then they were put together by, the puzzle was put together in the display of the entrance of the school. And they talked about differences and how everyone has a difference, but everyone fits together. And then on Wednesday, they were encouraged to wear blue for anti-bullying. And the teachers welcomed the students to school at the door with smiley stickers. The parents were sent home a handout about what is bullying. And then the students watched a video about the same and then a video about character. And the fifth graders made bookmarks for each other with kind words. And on them, they then laminated them and then they were handed out to classmates. And K through fourth grade did a wrinkled heart activity about how words can hurt and that before you speak, you should think and be smart and it's hard to fix a wrinkled heart. And then we had this activity on Thursday. And the kids were very compassionate. It was just a nice 15-minute activity. And then at the end, the principal just said, you have to remember during the rest of the year and every day you should think about each other and their differences. And one little girl just yelled out, "Okay." It was just, yeah, it was just a very nice moment, but I just wanted to share that, so.
You don't have a picture of your kindness chain in here.
My?
Yeah.
What do you mean?
Didn't you make one?
No, I didn't make a kindness chain. It was all done during the week, I just came to observe. I have one at home. I do. Any other liaison reports? And school visits, any school visit? Then item 11, I'm looking for a motion to enter in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, Sub 1, Sub C, to discuss employment, promotion, compensation and performance evaluation data of represented and non-represented staff. Do I hear that motion?
I'll move.
Motion by Mr. Lewis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gamble. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mrs. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Gamble?
Aye.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
Mrs. Wikowski?
Aye.
And I say yes.
Motion carries. We're now into, in closed session at 7:24, do we need a slide? We are returned to open session at 7:57. And no action was taken in closed session. So future agenda items, item 12, we have a people services report on April 11th. We have the board self-evaluation discussion. And I'd just like to remind the board to get your evaluation into Megan as soon as possible.
Is that also on April 11th?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, she didn't have that date on here, yes, April 11th. And then the district administrator's goals update on April 11th. And it says a safety report on April 25th, but we're changing that also to April 11th. And then we have a new early college credit program approvals and Start College Now on April 25th. And then an academic and technical excellence scholarship approvals on April 25th. Anything else?
I was going to say, we should move those last two items from the 25th to the 11th, so we have an 11 o'clock meeting. Jeff will be very happy to be gone.
We have had that on occasion, but no. Okay, so a school board meeting debriefing, are there any comments?
Very impressed all the high schoolers.
Oh, yeah.
Really, they were good. Their stories and.
So articulate.
That was the word I was going to use, yep, exactly.
Good presentation. Okay, then, looking for a motion to adjourn.
So I'll move.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Alexandrovich, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries and we are adjourned at 7:58.